Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in whose soul the liberty is just for all.
Welcome out to the borough's October third meeting. Apologize to the guests for being two minutes tardy.
You can get a refund at the door.
Any citizens we should address? I just wanted to say this game yesterday too. Yeah, you should be a Bills fan. That was back when we had class. Anyhow.
I have to address Fort Kelly.
Go ahead.
And I'm in the middle of choking, so I don't know how I'm gonna say it.
All right.
I got you the notice. I'll do the library stuff when I get to my library report, but I'm doing the Hilltop Heritage right now. Um, she's got dates for things that are coming up, which is fine. Um, Trump retreat, I don't know where that's gonna be, but we're gonna try to be as close to the fire hall as possible since that's where the parade wraps up. So it could be down here, I don't know. Um, the thing that she has for a possible action item, I don't know if you had a chance to read through it. It's the community garden project that the coalition has been working on for a little while now. And they submitted for a grant. So she wasn't sure because we have some private property owners that are willing to donate parts of their land for this. And would take the borough in the loop, obviously. But if it's on private property, is she fine to just do as they please, or is there something more to that? Or you guys, does the borough need to get involved in any way? She wasn't sure.
Assume if it's on private property and, and, well, there'd be insurance issues, it would be taken out with the coalition and then like, it's your business.
Yeah, I didn't think there was anything either. And then, in, currently in communications with the trail club for the, uh, golf cart rides down to the bridge. Uh, for senior citizens and people with mobility issues. Um, working out insurance liability between them and the coalition. But, um, they are gonna be doing a positive on that pretty soon, so that's actually something I think is kind of exciting. But the rest of it's all there, so if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but you've got the information.
Anything else? Anybody else? All right, we'll move on to the business meeting. Our mayor this evening and maintenance report. Think they've been pretty lucky with the timing of the problem with the, uh, two thousand sixteen. Two years, or last year it was a clutch fan, this year it's the water pump behind it, but luckily they seen the water dripping and got it over to the dealership before it blew and were in yellow there.
Um, this comment on Swedish benches, is that, is that all of them? Is that the recommendation?
Yeah, I talked to Rick about them. Um, he redid them, stained them and worked on them a couple of years ago, and he's saying they're in pretty, pretty rough shape. You guys wanna take a look at them? We store them here. But, uh, what he's, he's saying, how many years ago were those purchased and put out? Over ten fifteen, I was there. Pushing twenty. We need to take a look at them, if the festival committee wants to do something, or if we need to replace some legs, or...
So, Earl paid for them the first time around?
For the festival. Borough just has been maintaining, putting them in, putting them out.
Festival committee paid for the material in prison, federal prison over here made them.
Oh wow. How many are there?
Ten, maybe eight then.
I know we're down a couple, 'cause two of them got hit in front of us in your centers up. One time by a car.
No, that's why we got fired, because I was dipped in front of the road by the mayor's house.
Hilltop here is bringing money in and buy, how many did they buy, Jason?
We have seven, they just live out during the festival.
Yeah, seven benches, so. Continue with something like what they bought. Uh, I don't know, so, I thought. I didn't think they were that bad a shape, I mean, yeah, they could maybe be in
Take a look at them, but I know Rick Staven went over, and I typed them all up here probably three years, three years, two or three years ago.
It might be a case where we take a look at if any of our salvage will claim those, the ones the coalition has bought, and then we can look at whether any organizations can pick up more, maybe we can at least if any of them are salvaged, we'll get through the next festival and go from there.
Anything else in the maintenance report?
I'm going to accept.
Chuck, bar, I'll second. All right, I'm on second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Barbara, for a man.
I went to the subdivision and ended up at the workshop. It was very interesting. Oh, they had like five or six different speakers. They went really fast. Uh, the DOT grant system, this is gonna be a lot easier. You guys just give me permission to go ahead and do it, and it's, it doesn't, I like, I don't have to send it to PennDOT, and they send it to the county. It's all gonna be done electronically. Um, I ordered the solar radar speeds. I'm not sure when they'll be in. I've started preliminary work on the budget. So I'm going to, anybody that wants to put anything in or try to work anything into it, please let me know. We did get a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a grant for the pocket park. Tracy Franklin from the Eats group would like to meet with council to decide on what to include in the initial step of development. And then, um, I'm working on several letters for co-violation. I did send one out Friday. Um, starting fresh, because I don't really know where she was at with everything, so. That's all I got.
When the solar signs come in, uh, how are we going to determine placement of those?
Well, it's kind of your baby as far as I'm concerned, a lot of two, uh,
Well, one of my front yard.
Well, we gotta get approval.
It's not brown. In your front yard.
Well, not right now, there isn't. You have some signs.
I'll make room, okay?
You have too many other signs in your front yard.
Well, when I look at it, this was Chuck's baby from the beginning. He should work with, uh, PennDOT and, and pick where the signs should be in the maintenance group. I think one thing we're gonna run into is PennDOT approval as far as placing the signs, 'cause we ran into that before.
Yeah.
When we put up those signs for the landfill.
Oh yeah.
We're gonna have to get permits, so.
I remember that, yeah. The thing that, yeah, the other thing is, once they come in, I mean, let's, let's just not knee jerk on it, because I know that they're going to have to be placed in such a way that the solar panels will get charged, charging, so they continue operation, though, you know, if they're in a shaded area or someplace that does not get their, the right sunlight or angle, then they, they will, they won't work properly, so.
And once they get here, I'll reach out to PennDOT and get the permits and everything that we need to.
Yeah, I, I, I had no idea, like, the other ones are usually rated at each edge of the twenty-five. I'd like to see one a little farther out coming in on, on, on the thirty-five, that, but maybe that's where we, we can run the temporary, you know, or the, the portable, portable one, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the portable one, that, as far as I'm concerned, you spearheaded it, you wanted it, you did it. Pick where you wanna put them and do it. Work with the manufacturer.
Okay, check with PennDOT and see what kind of permits or permissions we have, and, and maybe they have some places that are more conducive than others, or some places that we specifically cannot go to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Pledge of Allegiance, early, uh, management's work. Chris, pardon the motions.
My second.
Chuck, bar, seconds. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. No corrections or additions to the minutes of the approved as presented. Treasury report about the bills.
I'm in to motion to accept the treasury report and payment of bills.
Oh, as you guys will see, there's a new savings account there for the ARPA money that come in. It was deposited into, um, the general fund, and then I opened a savings account note.
Also, we'll see where we're paying M and B, that's the money that comes in from and goes out from, uh, the federal grant that we have to administer. Motion's been made by Chris.
Second.
Second by Frank. All in favor? Motion carries. Committee reporters, Tom.
All right, uh, far as up at the park, my eagle scout candidate, um, it's, uh, was up and they, uh, ran, uh, wire brush wheels over the holes and everything, got a coat of paint on them, I went and looked at it. Looked pretty good. I mean, as far as the coat, I didn't get a chance to talk to him to see if he, we gotta try to get one more on or not. You know, another coat. I don't know how much paint was left. It might've got all used up. 'Cause I had Rick pick up a gallon of paint for it. We are going to, I'm gonna get the lumber from Kenny Stroop and set up under the pavilion so we can get the ceiling up. But I wanted to get that done, 'cause if it's a kind of a miserable day, we can work underneath the pavilion to put the ceiling in. We don't have to have dry weather to do that. And now, there was no plans on staining it, you know, that's gonna have to be hung, let up there for, you know, a good six months more before that can be done anyhow, but that's not included in his project. As far as streets and stuff, they, Rick and them had been up at the park winterizing, so hopefully nobody plans on wanting to use it, 'cause the bathrooms have been, water's been drained, shut off and drained and stuff, so. On the streets, sidewalk project, right, now they, uh, do they plan on, I had through the rumor mill, that they're not gonna come down Center Street this fall? Possibly.
Reason for that is, hopefully, they're moving fast enough on this section over here that they'll be done. They don't want to cut the curb and have to pour without being able to get asphalt. So the asphalt plant shuts down sometime around Thanksgiving, depending on weather. So once IA shuts down, they're gonna be done, and that can be within a day's notice, so they don't wanna go too far. Seeing where they're at now, and I'm hoping they're gonna be pouring tomorrow. There's only a small section on Main left. So I can't see why they can't get this small section of sidewalk done in the next two weeks, but it's gonna be weather dependent and how it goes. We'll see.
How far down did they go? Right past you and Motlin and Meyer?
Right, right at the end of the building. And they're, have everything laid out.
What about the fire department entry? Did they ever get, uh, the weight load there?
They, they have everything that they need other than the basin. They, the manufacturer that they use for the four by four basin with the two grates, um, they can't get them, and I mentioned to the superintendent of the job, why can't you just form it and pour it yourself? And get grates? He's, well, I'm thinking about it, don't I? I said, well, you probably oughta think about it real quick, because you should be able to make fours and get a four by four box, put in and get the grates, standard grates. So not have to have Anything else?
No, I have nothing else, man.
Chris?
Chuck?
I spoke with John and Rick this morning, and, uh, everything seems to be okay. They have no issues. Talked to Barb a couple of times. I'm, I'm not aware of anything on personnel. We're good.
Excellent. Jason, any solid starts planning?
Yeah, um, I have a couple of things. I also have a question, 'cause of the, the way the rumor mill works, and so, this is for Barb. The baby toddler swing, I have heard we had some problems with it. What is, I saw it on the budget, on the stick, yeah, the budget, whatever, the invoice.
It's a problem?
No.
Some big kids went up and got in it and broke the frame and...
But are we getting replaced, like what's?
We're not getting a new frame, no.
Okay.
Where's the seat?
They're gonna take, what?
Where's the seat?
It's here. They were working on painting the thing, so we weren't gonna put it up until the painting was done. So there wasn't paint, like, dropped all over it and stuff?
So, is that something we can get a refund for, or no?
No, they, they destroyed it. The bigger kid. How could we get a refund?
No, that's a way that we've had for very long.
That was abuse.
That was abuse. Those kids shouldn't have been on.
They'd laugh at us if we told them that.
Correct, so I had that question, and then, um, as you saw in Barb's report, we got the grant to start on the park.
Yeah, I'd like to give Jason a big, a root for
Amen.
It's a group effort. Certainly Barb was instrumental in getting that, and I will be getting with her soon. I've been drawn for the past week, got here late yesterday, but I will follow up with her this week to see if we want to, uh, or if anyone has thoughts here, I'm open to them, whether we want to explore, uh, other engineering options for design, or move forward with the one that we got from the Eats group. Um, look for maybe a cheaper design, because that one, obviously, is a little pricier. Now, it is still something we plan to do in phases. And I believe the grant that we have now would probably knock out the first phase, which is the patio and possibly more, um, up top at the street, and then redesign rubber gardens and things like that, so.
Could, could I use that design for another grant, then? 'Cause we have that park grant that's open until the end of October. Could we write something up with that, as like a phase two, we try to get something, it has like a map, though, it's a twenty percent map. So you guys would have to agree to match whatever we could get.
How big is that grant option?
Sixty-five thousand, I think, is the map.
Is that, I'll be, I thought it was more than that. I'd have to look at it. So I know we didn't have anything right off the top of our head, but if you could use the same design, we have, I mean, I have that design with the other grant, you know, the other grant packet, that we could just put in, maybe.
Yeah, we should be able to do it. It's still the same basic design, it's just the details that might change.
Right. And we could write in there that we have, we, we were awarded this grant as phase one, and we would like to take it to a phase two.
Correct.
So with this hundred and twenty, we're on the hook for twenty percent of a hundred and twenty?
Fifteen.
So we're on fifteen thousand?
Eighteen thousand, yeah. Now, the one that's open until October twenty-seventh is twenty percent match.
Basically puts us at a hundred and forty. The total of the design was two fifty?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, well, it was a little more than that, but it could be, like, that would, yeah, and the overages could be like the state, the, the third one, phase three.
I think if you sat down and talked with
We could even have a scale of action.
Terry, or, was it Terry?
Yeah.
With the easy driver, just see what you think you can get for a hundred and forty thousand.
Correct.
I'm sorry, where are you coming with a hundred and forty?
Or the hundred and twenty?
We have to, we're a hundred and twenty, we have one eighteen, so.
Right, so it'd be a hundred and thirty.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
You said there's not much.
No, I wasn't sure, so.
Who what?
Yeah, it was an misunderstanding.
But at any rate, um, talk to the engineering firm, see what we can actually get, or whoever you get, it's professional services, so you don't have to put it out for bid. Uh, you can, I will stress this in the sidewalk project, get somebody that has done this type of work with that grant before, because we've had some significant issues with ours. So it's better to pay a little more upfront and know that it's gonna be done correctly than, than not. Whatever you, you wanna do there, um, committee can meet, see who you wanna go with. But I think these is, it might be a little more expensive, but they certainly know what they're doing.
Any idea who engineered the cane park?
I do not know. I can find out.
Maybe if you reach out to Don Payne, I'm sure we could find out for whoever, whoever spearheaded that. Because that's
Payne cares, I think, did that. Didn't he? No?
What engineering group? Was it E and M or Eats, or? Eats is a pretty popular, and so is E and M.
They're very large, but at any rate.
Yeah, but we, you know, obviously, they have, that's, that's very similar, you know, like, kind of what we're, we're doing, so they would, correct, there would be at least a general knowledge.
As they figure out what a hundred and forty you get you, then, so we, where we can go.
So are you guys okay if we go ahead and submit that, if it's?
An additional grant to try to
Here's the deal, we can always turn it down. We don't have to accept it. So it's not like, you put it in, go, no, we, we can't afford twenty percent, or we, we appreciate it, but it's not what we want. We put it very great, go, we just only have to accept it. Put it forward, it's fine, accepting is another thing. Yeah.
But, 'cause one of the most expensive parts of the design is the bathroom itself. So it's possible that just what everyone else could be done, and then we could seek additional funding.
Just wonder if the trail club couldn't get that, like, 'cause it seems like if you say something with a trail, they just throw money out. I've just seen it in the newspaper and everything, I mean, you're
I've talked to them about it.
And that's, that's the real reason, when I talked to you, and, and when we put it in, was public access for the trail better, 'cause we don't need one there, we got a borough one here.
Do you want me to reach out to Terry Franklin and see when he could meet with us, or?
Yes, please.
How do you wanna do that?
Yeah, that's fine, and, um, if it's during the day, just let me know.
Okay.
Okay, I can get up.
And that way, maybe we could see, like, before the end of October, maybe throw something together.
Yeah, that'd be great.
You already have the design, so.
Right, so we know what we're doing.
We can figure out when we got a budget.
That would be perfect. All right, um, anybody else have anything else on that? All right, the other thing is, I hand it out to everybody, our tentative five-year plan for Ball, Ball Field. As you'll see in my little note, it's not a hard five-year plan, it is more a order of priority. If it takes ten years, it takes ten years, but this is the order in which, um, in our group, in our meeting that we had, um, everyone kind of agreed, this is how we should focus, so we have smaller focuses up, up front, things that are tangible and doable to get the community's support behind what we're doing out there, and we can scale up as it progresses. Um, we are looking, um, I know Frank was looking into getting some pricing on the steps um, to the upper pavilion, 'cause that's kind of our big project for the first year. We'd like to have that number in quickly, and some, get some other estimates in for, before the budget, so we can determine if there's any room in the budget for anything, and then seek other avenues of funding as needed. Yes, Frank? Anyone have any questions or concerns or confusion about anything on that sheet?
Just clarify, we're talking in the Gallup Avenue, right?
Yes.
Something that we were able to do a couple of times, and, 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 and it lent itself to be a little hokey, but, but we did get some use out of an ice skating rink.
And that is, yeah, I didn't put that on here, I, I, I almost put in a section that was like ongoing or down the road.
Yeah.
That's how it was brought up.
There, there was talk about establishing a more permanent, you know,
Yeah.
rather than just barricading on the blacktop and trying to flood it, and we got some use out of it, and some of the people, you know, you know, of course, a lot of that is weather conducive, whereas if, you know,
And some of that, like, the, the, if you look on your five, that shared space in the back,
Yeah.
that is the area that we were thinking, possibly something like that.
Yeah.
Kind of building out back there.
You know, something that, uh, you know, would, would be enclosed, and, and you lay the right amount of clay down, and it becomes more of a permanent
It was Bradford, right?
Callahan Park, yeah.
Yeah.
What's that, sorry?
Bradford has something
Callahan Park.
Callahan Park.
Yeah, I mean, they have a big facility and
Yeah.
But it can be scaled down.
You know, and, you know, you have some nighttime lighting, and you schedule adult skates, and just, just food for thought for the long term.
All right, we'll say one of the things we talked about, um, it's not on here, 'cause it's, the idea is that as we develop on the park, we then start to expand utilization of the park. There was talk of, um, it would be kinda nice, once maybe the upper pavilion is done, um, we could put a haunted house there, we could even maybe work on transitioning the whole Halloween experience from the fire hall out to the ball field. They could march the parade straight up all the way out there, and then we could, we could do the pumpkin walk, we could do the scarecrow, we do a lot of different things, so it's like, as we start incorporating the ball field more into community events and programs, hopefully that will help build that momentum, uh, as well.
Community awareness, for one thing. So few, so few people even know that it's there to use it.
Right, so we're looking to try to change that.
The thing I do have on this, and it's more not a five-year plan, but a pearl thing we need to look at, now that we've had the, um, survey done, there's quite a few trees between Carl Cook's house and, and our pavilion, and our dying, overgrown, dead, that are gonna need to come down. Some things that are maintenance department might be able to do, but some of them are quite large and quite in bad shape. Uh, Carl was thinking about taking them down, and I said, well, Carl and I are good friends, I said, you better wait till we survey it, because we don't know whose property this is, really. And, uh, that property line takes quite a severe angle, goes quite a bit behind Mr. Ginkels' house. So there's, there's a lot of that area that, it's a lot bigger on this side than we previously thought. It's not, by any means where the wood lines are, it's it's almost a giant swimming pool.
I find a blight we got, pine trees, does anybody have, I don't know.
I don't know.
Last up the theater is something, huh?
Tiff light.
Tiff light?
Tiff, yeah.
I noticed several across, you know, when I traveled down to Indiana, PA, the whole way down through, just pine trees are dead, dead, dead. You know, and I just wondered what's going on. Is that the same old, that was, Brett's talking about a bunch of those, hemlocks that
Even the pushing ones?
Dying off.
Only the
Oh, there's also those shrub, everybody, look at, if they've ever been done.
Do you know swimming pools within ten feet of the property line, when you go over?
It's those family entrance line, these things. They kill trees.
Sorry, that was just, and I'll talk to the maintenance department, maybe during the fall, they can trim down some of the lower brush and, and look at it, see what they can actually, um, remove or not, so. Just food for thought, and think about, we have a lot more area than, than what you're seeing, so. Anything else you have, Jason?
Um, that is all that I have. If you have anything further to ask about it.
It's all for your planet? Frank, do you have anything for Fire Department?
Hmm?
Do you have anything for Fire Department?
I don't have a fire department.
They're recording.
I don't have any for Fire Department.
They're meeting Thursday.
That's what they said, a couple of years ago. Let them flumble away.
Jason, library.
All right, library, um, Kelly wanted to know if, uh, she could have permission from the borough to permanently install a TV. She had time, come look, um, at the wall where it would be installed to make sure that everything is good, and I believe she said, you said, it's good to go?
Yeah, I, I looked at the wall where she was talking, it's a, you know, it's a cement block wall. Just taking tap guns, drilling it, put tap gun screws into it, which holds in the concrete.
Yeah.
Uh, I told, in fact, I told her I would hang it if they get the bracket, council approves it, that I would hang it for them, you know, for no charge, just to get it in, so.
Yeah, so fifty-five inch TV, she got that grant.
They'd love you to install the TV.
Chris, motions.
My second.
Frank, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Um, she said, thank you to the maintenance crew for their ongoing efforts with the front door. It still slams a little bit, but not nearly as terrifying as when it was when it closed, so it's, it's better. Uh, if it, if it stays the way it is now, as far as I'm concerned, it's okay. Um, I was hearing it today, it's not gonna clip a heel or anything, so that's good. Um, she was not allowed to apply for the foundation grant, as Barb brought up in the meeting, um, there's a complex issue with putting a concrete pad behind the library, because the borough owns that property, and the library's applying for the grant, and that is an over. So as far as putting in a concrete pad
Did she ask them about that?
She didn't.
Okay.
And they said it's not possible. Um, so even if she had permission from the borough to do it, because the borough owns it, it just, and then it gets complicated when we were talking about it, because of liability. If the library puts a structure on borough land
Well, they're a nonprofit, we're not.
So, a, at this point, I'm not sure what the options are, other than like the borough putting up the pavilion, basically, 'cause you own it, or we own it. So at this point, it's kind of, uh, at a standstill, which I think is part of why they said, well, we need to focus anyways on the drainage first, to see if, uh, what it would take to get that, whatever it costs, I guess, to do that, so. Right now, she's got the tables, and they're movable, she's got tenants that are movable, so all that stuff is fine, it's just anything that's a permanent uh, structure or affixed to the property, she can't just do, or she can't get grant for. So that's where that stands. I think that's all I got for library.
I have anything out of the sewer. Chuck? Township Sewer Committee.
Want to touch on that?
Sure, um, I'm really dis- I'm really disappointed that the mayor is not here tonight. I have no reason, I don't have any idea where she is. At the McQuapak meeting in Youngsville, which, uh, Jason and I attended, the speaker was from the USDA, um, and he handed out, he did a handout, and, and there are so many programs and grants and monies available, uh, loans, et cetera, et cetera. Excuse me. I passed this off to Barb, um, this, this regional guy that, that is, his, his name is Gary Reed, and he's kinda like a Western Pennsylvanian. They just hired a new person, Sonny Korth, to do this, like, these few counties. Kelly asked him a lot of questions about certain projects, and, and I brought up what we have proposed, uh, for, before some Hamlin Township, and asked if they had any, anything to add to it, and, and there's a specific solid waste management grant that they would actually come in and assess the situation and perform the due diligence. They would basically do what, what the, uh, committee was, was set up to do. And, and so I, I passed it on to Barb. Uh, the mayor was supposed to get it and reach out to these people. Uh, I'm thinking that if we could contact them before we start moving forward with any exploratory committee, because if, if they're willing to do it for little or nothing, as a neutral third party, aside from the sewer, the township, and the borough, and come back with an unbiased assessment of the, the, the good, the bad, the ugly.
And, and the benefit of the fact that they, they've looked at similar projects in other municipalities.
Yeah, they've done, they've done similar projects before, and so I'm, I'm, I'm not quite sure what the next step is as far as contacting. Barb and I touched base on it just briefly today at the office. I'm certainly open for suggestions, but this, these booklets, and I've got an extra one here if anybody wants one, because I got a couple extra ones. Uh, and, you know, it would, I mean, this guy's throwing around a lot of money, however you wanna take a look at this USDA. He's got one.
Oh, no.
You know, uh, I mean.
I think it's the same guy that was at Senior Expo.
Probably. Uh, he, I mean, he, you know, he didn't, he didn't spend a lot of time beleagring all the different things. He highlighted some of the programs that are available, far, far beyond, but when, when I specifically mentioned this one, he, he turned immediately and highlighted, and then I spoke to him afterwards.
He seemed very confident that they have the tools, the resources, the knowledge to really help us make a informed decision.
They would know the, they would know the steps to take to do it. I mean, I, 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 I'm confident that if, you know, the, the we as an exploratory committee do, but we'd be start from scratch, and, and not really know, you know, we might end up putting cart before the horse.
Right, and he said that they can assess it, and with what they've seen, they can determine whether or not.
It's a good move.
It's even a good move, like, for us. Is it, what are the odds of bankruptcy, or whatever it is, you know, that's an extreme case, but, you know, that's, that's a lot of good knowledge and information that, you know, these guys, that they, they know this probably better than, than we do.
So I guess I'm, I'm open for suggestions, uh, from anybody from Barb, uh, how, 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 how we wanna proceed with that in terms of making contact?
Well. If Barb doesn't mind making the contact, we should have her make the contact. She's on the committee anyways.
Are you good with that?
So she's a good contact.
You, you need me, if you need any, and you need me to make any phone calls or emails or whatever, and.
Just reach out, fine. I, well, I looked at the USDA site. I got the gentleman that you talked about.
Okay.
I got his phone number, so I can call him tomorrow.
Start there and see, and, you know, let me know if, if, uh, you know, if I need to come in and sit down, or we need to be involved. Okay, so speaking of that, and from the McQuapak, I will just tell everybody now that the next meeting is February twenty-third in Kane.
They like to do winter meetings in Kane. They lamented that. They're like, "Why do we go north in the."
They, yeah, we go up there in February. They do a good job.
Twenty-third, did you say?
Yes, uh, February twenty-third, um, and, and, and I, I'm not sure that, I don't, I don't, I don't think they've announced the, the site yet, but, uh, you know, when you go to Youngsville and you see the people that are making the effort to come from Emporium and Cottersport, and you go to Emporium and you see that, but then, you know, and I brought up it, I, it's no different. You see the same faces at McQuapak. By the way, uh, do I need Deprison's husband? It's almost spooky. They look like twins. But, uh, uh, yeah.
I can't even deny what he said. It was, when I, when I saw him, before he said a word, I said, "He reminds me of," and then he was like, "That's my wife."
Yeah, really, isn't that uncanny? And people look at their pets, they're like their spouse. But anyway, uh, it would be nice to see Mount Jewett being well represented in Kane in February. And, uh, you know. So anyway, there we go.
Thanks, Luke. And then, uh, bike racks, and we talked about the grant for the park. If there's anything else, really. Now, I don't understand, motion moving on.
I'll make the motion.
Mark, make the motion. Tom, your second. All in favor?
Aye. Okey, okey, okey.